We have a lot to go through tonight, so we'll get right after it. First item I have is the amended version of the budget, which is Resolution 14019, star. And I'm just going to defer to Mayor Scheffler to kind of open it up and drive any questions that we may have. So Mayor Scheffler.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stotan. I have answered some questions from some council people about the budget, but I'm going to go down and hit some of the highlights. The total budget proposal, all funds, is 126,850,000 versus 131,650,000 last year. The general fund, this year's budget, 20,819 versus last year's 20,317. Police and fire separately, 19,237 versus 18,651 last year. So some of the big impacts on the budget, health insurance cost increase for 2020 over 19 by $1.085 million due to increases fueled by negative claims experienced during 2018, 2019. The total budget for health insurance premiums is $8.065 million for 2020. The budget includes no pay increases for management or non-union employees other than program, step, and longevity increases. Union employees, that is, police, fire, comp, tax, and ASME will get their contracted wage increases. Several general fund departments will experience high levels of retirement in 2020 necessitating end-of-the-year payouts for unused leave days, and that's police, 282,000; fire, 110,000; and engineering, 40,000. Police and fire salary and benefit budget line items increased $1.4 million over expected 19 expenditures due to contracted wage and health insurance increases in retirement payouts. This despite authorized staffing decreases from 69 to 66 for police and from 70 to 67 for fire. Repeat that, we have lowered the authorized strength of those two departments by three each. Also, no police patrol cars will be replaced, which will increase future repair costs. We've kind of been on a cycle to try to replace three cars every year or two because they get lots of city miles on them and maintenance costs get bigger and bigger as they go. So due to authorized staffing reductions in police and fire, certain services will be eliminated, including responding to lockouts unless a child is locked inside, investigating private property vehicle accidents unless an injury is involved. There will be no dedicated parking enforcement unless a complaint is filed. Color guard appearances will be limited to July 4th and holiday parades. Police presence at community events such as Halloween will be reduced. Community calendars will be eliminated, and no citizen police academy will be held. With the fire department, inspections will be reduced or delayed. Some of the highlights of the budget. Enterprise and special funds, which I will remind you that the city cannot touch, are financially sound and stable. General fund department heads work diligently to reduce controllable budget line items along with administration ordered pay freezes. General fund cash carryover from '19 to '20 will be higher than estimated earlier in the year due to a large workers' comp refund of a little, right around $500,000, half of which belong to the general fund. Improved investment returns, an increase in reimbursed services, higher court costs and real estate tax revenue. Currently, general fund revenue will be right around $20 million versus what we estimated before the beginning of '19 of about 19.1 million. So that's good news. Actual general fund expenditures will be right around $20 million. Final totals obviously won't be known until after year-end, and that's about $300,000 below what the budget was. For accounting simplification, you'll find in the general fund section a new segment for police and fire, and that's budget pages 11 and 12, and that replaces the transfer line item in account 101.000.5907, which is found on page one. Street department will realize a $1.1 million increase in budget due to the new fuel tax passed by the Ohio Legislature and thereby annual budget, and the license plate fee increases that were passed by council several months ago. With that, I'll stop and answer any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Mine's simple, real simple. The budget that I had, my last budget that I got in my email, was dated 12/12, and that's the last budget that I went over. And tonight, sitting here today, or sitting here tonight, this is dated 12/16. Numbers, I'm looking at it, the numbers are the same. Has anything changed from this?
No, Mr. Stotan, well, there is at least one item that was one line below where it should have been, and it was moved up.
And he caught it.
Actually, Trish caught it. Mr. Stotan asked me to print out a copy for everybody for tonight, and the date on there is just because it was printed out at about 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
It's because I'm OCD, Melody.
That's okay, so am I. I just wanted to make sure you didn't change anything.
You need to have it in the right bucket as well. Further questions or other questions? As you're thinking of them, then I'll jump in and ask one. Would you talk about the $1.1 million increase in LDOT, therefore, I believe there's some hiring that's going to occur? Would you talk about that, please?
That's correct. The gas tax is going to generate something between $800,000 and $850,000, according to estimates. We did start getting that revenue in the fall, so we got a few months' worth in the fall, and the license plate fee will generate about $250,000. So some new things, obviously, we can do a lot more work with $1 million, and so several things are going to happen. The traffic control supervisor position, which has been vacant for several years and not filled because of prior reductions in street department revenue, will be filled, and you'll see that on your budget. Also, there's a plan to hire four more street crews, or four more people for a street crew to assist with additional paving, pothole filling, et cetera, that we can do with the additional money. And it seems like I'm missing one other piece that I can't remember right now.
A question, and maybe Paul's going to remember this better than you, and I don't know, is Greg here?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Greg's here. Oh, there's an increase in contract services, which will be used for outside firms to come in to do micro-surfacing and those other services that we don't do in-house.
What I'm looking for from an answer, maybe from Paul or Greg, is what was the manpower, let's say, pre-recession, and what will the manpower be in 2020?
Let Greg answer that.
If you can remember all the way that far back.
Say that one more time, please.
What was the manpower kind of pre-recession, and then what will it be in 2020?
We were, I'd have to go back and look at each year, but I know around 2004, we were about 32 employees.
What was that?
We were about 32 employees around 2003, 2004. This will bring us to 28.
Okay, good. So, you know, while you say you had four positions, I want you to understand that we've actually reduced seven or eight positions over time as the budget has needed.
Well, three of those, three of those four will be general laborers that we're bringing in. One will be in addition to the traffic control signals. So we're going to add one in there.
Okay, very good, thank you.
The big picture of that, in 2009, we had 470 full-time equivalent employees, and this year we'll be right around 435 to 440.
Another question, if I, in the absence of someone else having one. Talk about, we added a right-of-way engineer in engineering, you know, I think we added them, you know, maybe late spring. Talk about, you know, that obviously skewed the salaries in engineering, but they're, talk about the right-of-way fees that will offset some of that.
That's correct. So you'll see in engineering, I think, the staff in engineering went up about $12,000 over what we spent in 2019, and that is because the right-of-way engineer that we approved didn't start until April, so he didn't get paid for a few months. And under the new right-of-way ordinance that was passed a few months ago, the fees for right-of-way will begin in January. So it's a fairly complicated formula that's kind of set out in state law, but all the users, like AT&amp;T, Spectrum, Verizon, Columbia Gas, will pay a fee, an upfront fee, and then inspection fees as they get into our right-of-way and use our right-of-way. Our new engineer Cecil, who's been to council here recently, will be responsible for inspecting, and then at the end of the year, the costs will be added up and divided among all those users of our right-of-way to true-up, to cover the cost of his salary, his, you know, supplies, his computer, his mileage, all that kind of stuff. So, but as a, I think, a very conservative estimate, we put in the budget of $100,000 for 2020.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the final question I have is, in the utilities collection area, where we had a couple of noticeable increases, talk about those increases and the reason for that.
So utilities collection will be installing a new software system. The one we have is, I understand, fairly old, and the vendor is not responsive any longer, so we will be installing a new software system and converting three years of data so they have historical data. So that accounts for the contract services and the data processing line items in the utilities collection budget.
And then in the utilities collection budget, I believe there's a line item called bank fees. Is that because we're going to actually have a lockbox at some point in time?
I would say no at this time, but Mr. Treasurer will go first.
I believe, I didn't look at that budget, but I had conversations with the utilities collection office as well as income tax, and I believe that is a lockbox for cash, which means we're dedicating two employees to take cash to the bank every day, which, number one, you have a safety issue of cash running around. Number two, you will have two individuals down and back and waiting sometimes. It might be an hour, an hour and 15 minutes type deal, where you're taking two people out of the company. The concept is, you never cash receive by utilities office and the income tax department, who are going in this big safe, big box. You think of the reverse ATM. The money goes in a slot, it's counted, verified, it's put in there, and as soon as it leaves the hand of our employees, it's possession of the bank. They own that, they maintain that, and we give a leaning credit to my bank account. So I think, number one, it's an efficiency upgrade. We have not participated with the bank to set it up yet or put it out for bids, but that's why it's in there. Do we have efficiency, and you have safety?
Okay, I'm good with that. How soon do we get me a lockbox for people paying their bills electronically?
Yeah, that's a great question, and quite frankly, that is up to the individual department to want to move forward with that type of technology. I think you look at a lockbox situation, and a utility environment makes a lot of sense potentially, because you have, I think, probably 13 billing cycles each month, or maybe even more than that. It's a steady flow, a workflow, whereas the issue you have with the income tax department and actually the county treasurer's office, you have one or two times a year, you have a massive amount of work, and the rest of the time, the volume does not dictate the cost.
Yeah, I mean, in my case, I'll send a, I'll pay my utility bill. It's, you know, Chase is printing the check and mailing it to our, mailing it to the city.
That is correct.
Yeah, and that's, that's not very efficient. We do a account-to-account transfer, which happens in one day, and we don't have to touch a check. So that's another efficiency opportunity there that we need to be thinking about.
You're absolutely right, I might just dovetail on that, please. We have a great product. I personally use it for all my utilities and a lot of my bills. They hold them in my account every month. They'll give me a 10-day notice. We need to promote that more also.
Sure, but at the end of the day, for the folks that pay online bank like I do that don't want to set up through our website and want to be able to...
Electronic transfer.
Electronic payment, however.
The downside of that is, and that's starting to continue, if you forget a day, if it goes late.
No, I get that, but I've been paying my bills online for 15 years, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't take seven days to print a check, have it mailed, and then have them touch that very same check here, run it through the check reader, and then apply it to the account. It's not very efficient, so. I was all excited when I saw bank fees there. I thought that we were actually going to get a lockbox, but apparently not.
I would prefer to resurface it.
Who's microphone, microphone?
No, Bob's.
Bob's microphone.
Got to turn that microphone off.
Bob, turn that microphone off. Okay, well, I'm...
Well, I'm normally not allowed to talk.
Now that you're finished, and we have the microphone on.
We'll duke out the lockbox later, okay? All right. Further questions on the budget?
Tom?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Hall.
Just, just real quickly, on the, on page nine, the Muni Court budget, both sections, my recollection is that Muni Court is a shared expense between the county and the city. Is that, is that correct?
I'll let the administration answer that.
Yeah, sure. We have Judge Fields here.
Judge Fields? But yet you walk to the mic, right?
I do all the talking. She does all the hand stuff.
That's just the first one.
My mic only. There you go. Yeah, we get a, what is it, two-fifths, three-fifths? We do get a, the city gets a payment from the county regarding our budget.
So is this, does this budget reflect the total amount, or just the city's amount of?
Total amount, okay. That's it. What is it, 931? Is that what the number is? I didn't even look. Yeah, I think you get two-something back from the county on that.
Okay, that's helpful. And then, non-Muni Court related, the mayor mentioned that we're not going to be enforcing, or we're not going to be collecting parking enforcement. There are revenues that offset that particular expense?
Our parking revenue is extremely small.
Oh, okay, so the revenue doesn't obviously offset the...
Not even close.
From the court, most of your revenue would come from fines and costs for general M1s through M4s, MMs, yeah.
That's helpful.
I actually looked at the budget this year and know more about it than I've ever known before, so.
We've got to come up with more questions for you then.
I mean, it was, if not, I got jacked. Do you want me to go on, since I'm here?
No, I think we're good. We've got a lot to cover.
Okay, just real quick, I appreciate you guys. I just come because I know the relationship always hasn't been the best. If you have any questions for me, we've expanded our programming this year. We now have a veterans' court. We have a special abilities court for the developmentally disabled. We've now have four specialty dockets that we pretty much funded from within through grants from the feds. We got a $750,000 grant. We have to pony up $160,000, I think, over three years. That's how we're running that, so we're trying to take care of ourselves from within our own budget with what you give us, because we know your situation, and I didn't have to ask for any more money. In fact, I think I'm $1,000 less this year, so. But if you want to pony it up, we'll take it.
Not willingly. You have to write an order for that.
I love those, you know that. I got a stamp for that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Judge Field. All right, Mr. Woodger.
Just a question on the million, close to $1 million we're going to get in, into the street department. Is any of that funds going to go to supplement the road construction and road paving?
Yes. Yep, and, I mean, even the four laborers that will be hired will be used to work on the streets. I mean, obviously, our LDOT does a lot of the work themselves, and I did release today, and it's, I think it's part of the legislative package tonight, the 2020 street paving program, but there are a lot of streets, just like last year, that LDOT does, and they use their internal employees to do that.
So we'll be able to do some streets we wouldn't have been able to do without that money?
Yes, don't you see Greg smiling back there?
Thank you.
Okay, further questions? Seeing that I will offer to amend and replace, and then we will look for passage tonight of the city budget, and I want to thank the city administration, folks around council who have fed questions to me, and also fed them back to the administration, and then your responsiveness back to those questions. I know it was a difficult budget, obviously, when we're, especially when we're, you know, planning safety manpower down, that's never, never good, but with what we have, we're going to do the best we can with what we need to do, is we try to find future revenue. So seeing that they're saying that, we will move on to the next item, which is Resolution 14519, and that is the resolution to authorize the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a construction agreement for the 2020 street improvement paving program, and that's coming through Public Works. Mr. Skunover.
Yes, thank you. Mitch is going to come up, if you don't mind us skipping out of order, because he has a few of them. If we could hit all those at once, is that all right with you, Mr. Stotan?
I'm sorry.
Mitch is going to speak to the paving one, and if you don't mind, if we skip down to the couple of the ones that he has, we'll hit them all at once.
Oh, no, if you want to blow right through them, we can.
Cool.
No worries.
Yeah, good evening. So this is legislation for the service safety director to enter into a construction agreement with the lowest and best bidder for the 2020 street improvement program. I know that there is, I think we do have a typo on one of the, in the alternates that was brought to our attention here earlier today on the, it's basically, it's the second line where it says, "East Hubert from South Broad Street to South Cherry." That's not supposed to say "South Cherry," that's supposed to say "Denny Avenue." So we'll make an amendment to that and do a starred version. This is going to go three readings now?
Don't need to do an amendment, I changed it beforehand.
Oh, okay, all right, perfect. So anyhow, the base bid for this project is going to be North Broad Street from East Main to East Fair, South Columbus Street from Canal Street to West Main Street, and then East Chestnut Street from South Maple to South Cherry. So those are some somewhat high ADT streets, somewhere in the range, Broad Street's around 4,400 car, 4,400 cars per day on that, and Columbus is around 3,300, and Chestnut's around 2,000. So some highly visible local streets, and they're fairly wide streets, a lot of square yardage being put down there, and I think Mr. Woodger talked about additional funding that we get from the gas tax. This, this project will have some of that money to help do as much as we can here, depending on the bids, that hopefully will filter down into the alternate streets if we have good bids here. So you did mention that, and I wanted to reiterate that.
Questions from Mr. Nolan on 14519? Always exciting when we get to start this process, I assume, before you read it?
Yes, and Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
All right, Mrs. Bobbitt will second that. All right, moving on, we will move on to 147, so we can keep Mitch up here. That's a resolution to enter into a preliminary legislation for the installation of a traffic signal at State Route 188 at the intersection with Delmont and Mill Park Drive. Again, Mr. Skunover, that's coming through your committee.
Yes, Mitch?
Yeah, so this is, this original funding came through, we received $200,000 through the, it initiated at the ODOT level of the Transportation Improvement District, so ODOT has their own TID. It was transferred, or the money was funded down to the Fairfield County TID, and then the TID allowed the city to apply for that. So there's multiple levels. However, through this whole system, in trying to make it a little bit more efficient, I've talked with District Five engineers, and we're doing an LPA agreement just between ODOT and ourselves to keep the attorneys and all the agreements that we have to do between the TID, the county TID and the ODOT TID, and so this makes it a little bit more efficient and less agreements, and so this would be for the fact if, if there was any overruns in the project, which right now, our estimates are, it's about $183,000 project. We feel like we have enough money in that for the $200,000 grant to fund that. It would typically be a reimbursement-type grant. Since this is an ODOT project and ODOT is performing that, there's no reimbursement, so we don't have cash flow issues here, and so this is something to just protect us that, or protect ODOT, that if there were any overruns, that we would be covering that, which, this would be through the funding that's through the Rock Mill Corporate Park funding, if it ever came to that.
Questions for Mr. Nolan on 14718. Can you remind me again what the cost of the project is?
It's $183,000.
Okay, thank you. And three readings, I assume?
Yes.
And your second?
Wait a second. Actually, can I have one reading on that, please?
Suspension.
Suspension.
Okay.
So I'll ask for suspension, and then Ms. Bobbitt would second that.
And the only reason I ask that is ODOT would like to have this by January 6th, so.
Well, then that would be a problem if you want three reads. All right, we'll ask for suspension on 14718, with Mrs. Bobbitt being the second. Next item we have is 148 and 149, which are resolutions authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA with ODOT for the purpose of the Fair Avenue roadway improvement project from High Street to Sheridan Drive. Mr. Skunover, again, through Public Works.
Yep, Mitch?
Yeah, so the first one is just for the mayor to enter into the LPA agreement, requesting that we just have one or suspend on that for tonight. The remaining one, to enter into a contract with the construction agreement, that can go three readings, but this whole, these two pieces that are before you, the reason for them is, we actually had programmed Fair Avenue from Memorial Drive to High Street. There are some things happening through a CSO project, a combined sewer overflow project that's happening down Sixth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, Forest Rose, looking at all of our maintenance of traffic and things, having that section of Fair Avenue happening at the same time, we would have some extreme maintenance of traffic issues, so we flopped our Fair Avenue projects to the other side of High Street to try to accommodate multiple and coordination of multiple projects here. So that's the purpose of this. We still have Fair Avenue planned for the next phase, which would be the following 2021 season. It's just that we're trying to flop some projects around, so that's the purpose of this.
That would make sense. Questions for Mr. Nolan on 148 or 149? So 148, my understanding is we'll pass it tonight, and then 149 is three readings?
Yeah, that's correct.
Mr. Skunover, who are your seconds?
148 would be Ms. Teener, and 149 would be Ms. Bobbitt.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving back up the list, we'll go to Resolution 14619, and that's a resolution to authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids to the Memorial Drive Culvert Repair Project. This is coming through Water, Water Pollution. Mr. Woodger.
Yes, and I will be asking for suspension on this, and we, Denise will explain what's up.
Good evening. If you remember back in August, we actually advertised for bids for the Memorial Drive Culvert Project. This is the, replacing the head wall at the culvert at Pier One. We did not receive any bidders on that project, and it was too late to rebid, winter closed in on us. So this resolution is authorizing the engineering contract to rebid the project. There's always a little cost in that, because we have to redo some of the documents and that, and then the construction administration and inspection. I'm not in a hurry for this project. We're bidding the Union Mulberry Phase Three project this week, and I have to see how those costs come in to know how much money I have to spend for other construction projects. So we probably will not be advertising this until March.
And we'll go for three readings.
Okay, any questions on this?
And Mr. Hall will be my second option.
Mr. Hall? All right, good. So we're not suspending?
No.
Okay. Okay. Moving on, the next item I have is 15019. That's a resolution to amend, that is the wrong, oh, no, it's right. It's to amend the city budget to align the expected expenses with, back with the county auditor. So this is our annual cleanup piece, correct?
Correct.
And so we have to suspend on this tonight, it's our last meeting.
We just have to bring the budgets in line, yes. We just have to bring the budgets in line, yes.
Does anyone have any questions on this? This is our annual piece. We typically do either this meeting or one meeting earlier.
Right.
But I will be asking for suspension on the cleanup piece, and I'm going to assume there's no other discussion needed. Mr. McDaniel, will you second that, please?
Yes.
All right. All right. Then I have Resolution 151-19. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director and LDOT Superintendent to engage in an intra-departmental loan for the construction of a fixed canopy over the Lancaster City Fuel Depot as required by the Ohio EPA. This is coming through Public Works. Mr. Schoenover.
Yeah, this is a loan from one department to the other. I guess Greg will talk about it since he's coming up.
All right. We run, what we run into is every time we think we're going to have enough fund balance to carry the project, we end up with a $15,000 or $20,000 repair. So to get this thing off the ground and get it built, I worked with Trish and Stephanie. We decided to have LDOT loan, the fuel depot, the $60,000, excuse me, up to $60,000 that it's going to take to get this thing built. And then the, the fuel depot will repay whatever we actually spend. So it's not a $60,000 and that's what they're going to repay. If we spend 50, then that's all that it will repay, so.
I assume in four equal payments or something like that, or?
I think I took it for five years, but, you know, just, just for safety purposes. But, you know, fuel prices have been climbing slowly throughout the year, which has created other issues. And I just want to make sure that there's, there's money in there to fund it, but if, it puts us right on, right on the very edge. And I'd hate not to have the money to pay for a load of fuel for, because we're building this, so. Just don't want to run us that close.
All right. Questions for Mr. Hens. What's your timing on this, Corey?
Three readings.
And your second?
From Mrs. Bobbitt, please.
Yes.
All right. We'll go three readings on 151-19, and Mrs. Bobbitt has the second. Next item is Resolution 152-19. This is a resolution declaring the necessity of an election to ask the voters to approve an additional .45 of income tax for police and fire services. The, the additional amount is the same. We are just now dedicating the entire collection to funding safety forces. So I'm going to defer to Mayor Scheffler to kind of give us the, the reasoning on why we kind of changed our tack.
Yeah, a number of reasons. First of all, the general fund is, I hate to use the word taxed, but invest a significant amount of the general fund into the safety forces. This year, we'll be providing $12.1 million of general fund money, which is 58.2% of the general fund budget. Last year it was 57.4, 2018, 57.2, 2017, 55.2. It keeps going up and up. It becomes a bigger and bigger part of the general fund expenditures, and therefore takes away resources that are needed by other departments to serve the citizens of Lancaster. Secondly, we still have the need for a fourth staffed medic and for additional police officers to staff a directed patrol unit. Those two things cost $1.3 million and $0.8 million respectively, so those will still be top priorities. And thirdly, it significantly simplifies the ballot language down to two sentences from, I don't know, it was three or four paragraphs, I believe. And we've gotten some feedback that the ballot language was very confusing for voters, and a lot of people voted against it because they just didn't understand what it all meant.
A couple of questions. So when we talk about adding the fourth medic, how many more, how much more manpower is that?
That's 12 firemen.
Okay.
That'd cost a third, $1.3 million.
Okay. And then police officers, how many additional?
Four. A sergeant and three officers.
Okay. And does that assume that we restore back to 66 and then add?
Yes.
And we restore back to?
We would restore back to the prior authorized strength, plus 12, and then plus four for the police.
Okay. Mr. Woodger, I see your hand up, or?
In reading this, am I correct in seeing that this is only dedicating this funds to police and fire through 2022, and then it can be reallocated?
That's, no, that's not my understanding.
Well, that's kind of confusing here when I read through.
I'm not an attorney, so it's a, it's a permanently dedicated to police and fire.
What, where are you reading that?
Second page.
183.013 allocation of funds, as it says on the remaining pool, that's bonus tax at the rate of 1% for the period ending January 1st, 2021. Continuing there, such tax shall be used for the following purposes in the respective percentages. And then it will have, I'm sorry, general fund .96%, Parks Improvement Fund .01%, Cemetery Fund .01%, and City Capital Improvement Fund .02%. After?
That may be, your 2022 date may be referring to the parks levy because it expires.
Yeah, these are, these are the different.
Well, I'm just saying, the way it reads.
The way it reads, it's confusing.
It says January 1st, 2021.
Yeah, and it was likewise confusing on the ballot in November.
So the entire length of this particular thing, the money will all, will always go to police and fire?
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, but what that's doing is basically saying that any income tax you collect basically applies all the previous levies that we have on top of the statutory 1% that we deduct.
Yeah.
That's good catch, though. Good question. All right. So further questions for the mayor? I, I agree with you. I think this is a, a better tack. I think it specifically talks about the, you know, the pressing issues we have in the general fund, which are police and fire. And then certainly, you know, getting that manpower up is, is very important. I appreciate that. So questions? Okay, so with this, we need to have this to the Board of Elections, I believe, by Wednesday morning. So I will be withdrawing 1, I think it's 142, and I'll be asking for suspension on 152. And then the companion piece is ordinance 32, which can go a full three readings. And then I will withdraw that particular ordinance as well, which I don't know the number, but if I want to get my book, I'll find it. Okay. Moving on. Are there any departmental updates? Mayor Scheffler?
I have one, and, and maybe some of you have seen it on my Facebook post from Sunday, but the City of Lancaster was recognized by the Mid-American Economic Development Council at a luncheon on December 10th. Unfortunately, due to funding issues, we were not able to attend. But we were awarded first place in the Economic Impact Deal of the Year for Small Cities. And I will read from the press release from the Mid-America Economic Development Council. It says, "Economic Impact Deal of the Year recognizes a project having significant and measurable impact on a city, county, and region. The project must have already broken ground and be in the initial phase of implementation between January 18 and June 19. The measurable impact can include capital investment, job supply or network, economic impact, or new partnership initiatives that positively improve the community. And I would like to publicly commend Mike Pettit for all the work that he did on this project over more than a year. I frequently said that the general public does not understand how much work goes into a win like this. It's a big win. A symbol of how big it was is the fact that Vice President Pence came down for the groundbreaking. So these things take a long time. They can be frustrating because only a small percentage of the deals that you work on ever end up as a success story, but we got one, and we're proud that we got one."
Well, even to that regard, I mean, the press we will get from that certainly only helps to get our name out there in other publications and things like that, specific to why do people go to Lancaster? And, you know, you talk about that win with Magna and then the U.S. Corrugator. Those are two pretty big, two pretty big deals on, on Mike's watch, so he should be congratulated accordingly. Questions for the mayor on this? Very good. Thanks for that update. Are there any other departmental updates this evening? Yes, Stephanie?
Thank you. Just real quick, bring over the mentioned, because we've been getting a lot of questions. Sorry. NOPAC has finally sent out all of their electric aggregation letters. You can opt out by phone. Some folks are confused about that fact. You do not have to send a letter back. You can opt out by phone by calling 1-855-667-3201. And that's the number that is on all of the letters. If you did not receive a letter and would like to, you can contact them at that number as well, or get on their website and request the information that way. The lists come from the PUCO, so there are some discrepancies sometimes, some incomplete information, that kind of thing. So try the NOPAC website or that number 1-855-667-3201 if you would like additional information. Okay?
I would ask that during new business tonight, if you'll repeat the same message?
Absolutely, thanks.
Appreciate it. Mr. Woodger?
Is it possible that maybe through our utility bills, we could put in a statement or a letter explaining NOPAC and, and explaining to people that if they didn't get a letter and they would like to be in it, where, who they contact and how they take care of that? Because I think there's a lot of confusion out there. A lot of people who didn't get letters don't realize they're not in the aggregate. And is there some way we could improve that a little bit, maybe through utilities?
Well, I see the mayor leaning forward as if he would like to say something.
So if you did not receive a letter, you likely may not be eligible to participate in the NOPAC electric aggregation program. If you have already affirmatively selected another provider, then you would not have gotten the letter. If you were a South Central Power customer, you would have not gotten the letter. If you're participating in the program where you get assistance with your electric bill due to your financial situation, you are not eligible to participate by state law. So typically, if you didn't get a letter, you're likely not eligible, or you, you may be eligible, but if you already elected somebody else, then you have to, you know, proactively go to NOPAC and say you want to participate. We've gotten that word out a, a number of ways and times, and we've certainly fielded hundreds of calls at City Hall about that and have, have told people that. But we will continue to do that because it's a great program. It's going to save people money, and we'd like everybody that wants to participate to be able to do that.
Well, it seems like we've not necessarily done a good job either explaining or reaching out, because we only send out 6,000 notices and we have 15,000 households, I believe, and?
I don't think that's correct, because after the last meeting, I called NOPAC.
Did you?
And I said, "Hey, I'm such and such, and this is what, yeah, you're eligible." I said, "Well, I didn't get a letter in your programs. I contacted Randall, who also didn't get one, who?"
And I didn't get one, yes.
Well, so I have recently, I, I got one at the end of last week.
Yes.
So, and I believe it picked up another five or 6,000 people. So I don't know what the first batch was.
Actually, over 11,000 letters.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Then we have gotten past that first 6,000.
Correct. Correct. And then the other thing is, I believe we have something on the city website that if, if in doubt, and then I assume you can always call City Hall and you will give them the number of NOPAC. I will tell you this. I called them, and all you really need is, is your account number or even probably just your address, and they can give you information. Because it, it, the discussion I had on the phone didn't last a minute. And they said, "You are eligible. Yes, you're in," it was the First Energy Program. And then that tells me if I'm in the First Energy and I didn't change anything, then I am authorized through NOPAC. So I believe that information Randall took back to them, which then generated another five or six thousand letters.
We will continue to clarify all that.
Yeah. And again, maybe, you know, Stephanie, while you're talking in new business, and I just remind them, if you have any questions, you can find it on the website or call the city. You know, just, just call the mayor's office and, and certainly point you in the right direction, because it's, it is a good program.
Well, that's good, because as of last meeting, we thought we had a lot of people that hadn't been in contact. Sounds like we've done a much better job now.
I was one of them.
Me too.
Yeah, we're getting there. Okay. Everyone put your hands. Who else? All right. Other departmental updates? Mr. Fields, you want to talk again, or?
I'm always ready. If you want to hear.
All right. Okay, seeing none, I'll defer to President Oul for tonight's meeting prep.
I think we've covered it.
I mean, you're throwing it back at me?
Back at you.
All right. Were you reading a book?
Merry Christmas.
Grapes of Wrath, or?
Talk about yourself.
All right. Any other items for finance? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And I have a second. It is 6:45 or 6:46, so?
The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin promptly at 6:50.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio, and Fairfield County. And like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me, and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity, and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects whom I volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County, and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With a Cop alongside the Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community, and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from, so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful, and just as important, that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers, or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home in Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Almost everyone needs a car to get from point A to point B, and many families have two or more cars. At Carriage Company, located at 1031 North Memorial Drive in Lancaster, we specialize in hard-to-find used cars. Due to the recent success of the new car market, there is a large inventory of used cars available for resale. We can help you find exactly what you're looking for. With over 15 years at this location and 27 years' experience in the business, we are the best place to go to find your next car, truck, van, or SUV. As a member of the Better Business Bureau, we are a Carfax Advantage dealer and offer great financing rates through a local area bank, with warranties available on most vehicles. We know your time is valuable, so we take special pride in making sure that you get what you came for at a price that you can afford.
Come into Carriage Company and check out our sweet deals.
Stop by today and let us help you, or visit us online at carriagecompany.com.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please rise with me for a word of prayer. Father, thank you for this day and your many blessings. We thank you for your continued leadership and guidance in our life. During this season of Christmas, I ask that you would help us all to remember the real reason for this season, the birth of your son, Jesus. May you bless all that happens here, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation. for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Downhour?
Here.
Mr. Groff?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Mr. Woodard?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated November 25, 2019.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file the journal. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Reports of city officials.
Email dated November 26, 2019 regarding helpful information from Chief Ward submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin. Email dated December 8, 2019 regarding cancellation of December 11th Law Committee Meeting submitted by Mr. Groff. Series of emails dated December 8, 2019 regarding electric government aggregation program submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. Email dated December 12, 2019 regarding 2020 budget files for Monday's meeting submitted by Mayor David Scheffler. And finally, an email dated December 12, 2019 regarding 2020 budget files for Monday's meeting submitted by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second.
We'll take that second. We have a motion and a second to receive and file the reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there any communications?
There are two. Email dated November 27, 2019 regarding spectrum certification, certification of registration submitted by Michael Zarelli, Vice President, Assistant General Counsel for Charter Communication, and a series of emails regarding electric government aggregation program submitted by Greg Wooten.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the communications.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll now move on to special presentations and awards. Going to ask that Mr. Woodard join me here at the podium. We have a couple of members of City Council that, uh, won't be joining us as we move into the new legislative year, and we want to take this opportunity to recognize them for their years of service. And today, we're going to present Mr. Woodard with this plaque in appreciation for his years of service. It says, "Presented to Gerald Woodard, At-Large Representative, Lancaster City Council, from January 1, 2018 to December 31, 2019, in honor of your service to the citizens of Lancaster." Mr. Woodard, we appreciate you and your service.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to, uh, thank first the citizens of Lancaster who have entrusted with me the opportunity to serve them, and then I'd like to thank my fellow council member who have been a pleasure to work with you over these past two years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. And Mr. Groff, would you please join me? In the same way, we want to thank Mr. Groff for his years of service. This plaque says, "Presented to Randy Groff, Third Ward Representative, Lancaster City Council, for January 1, 2012 through December 31, 2019, in honor of your service to the citizens of the city of Lancaster." Mr. Groff, thank you for your service.
Mr. Groff has prepared some remarks.
I lost the other 99 pages. Just wanted to make a short comment and need a reminder in front of me. Yesterday, I was reminded of a quote. Uh, it was the words of an accomplished American writer, Robert McCloskey, who was also born in Ohio, about two hours from here, down in Hamilton, a city in many ways similar to Lancaster. Matter of fact, it's the only other city in Ohio that has a municipal gas department. In Robert's words, "I know that believe, I know that you believe you understand what you think I said, but I'm not sure you realize that what you heard is not what I meant." Sounds like politics to me. Robert wrote children's books. Some were made into short commercial films, comedies which may represent true-to-life experience. Sounds like politics to me. Uh, at this point, all I'd really like to do is, I'd like to thank the voters that voted for me, also those that didn't. The important part is that people get out and vote, but people must also have a choice. They deserve not just a voice, but a choice. Thanks.
Once again, just let me say thank you to both of you for your service to the citizens of Lancaster. Are there any petitions or memorials tonight?
There are none to be presented.
During this portion of our meeting, we set time aside to allow the voters and taxpayers of Lancaster to address City Council on any item or issue they would like. If you'd like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we ask that you come forward to the podium. Sign in with your name and address on the clipboard, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while City Council members may choose to respond to you at a different time during our meeting, we will not do so during this portion of the meeting. In accordance with the rules of City Council, we ask that you would keep your comments to five minutes or less. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Probasco. You can sign in after your comments, ma'am.
I'll write it.
Go right ahead, yeah.
Good evening. Um, I'm sure you guys weren't expecting to see me again, but I'm here. Same reason, the light at Broad and Hubert. On November the 23rd and on December the 13th, we have had accidents at Broad and Hubert. Both were property damage accidents, the one on December 13th with the most property damage. There were no injuries in either accident. The Block Watch posted pictures on Facebook. I want to read to you a few of the comments that popped up under the pictures. I won't be releasing their names, but I will say what they wrote. Sometimes I think it's a great that the light is gone, but I also live in the neighborhood for pretty much all my life, and sometimes you have to kinda go far into the intersection to even see if a car is coming. And in this area, cars fly. They go above the speed limit, and I have witnessed accidents or near accidents in this intersection even before the light was taken out. Because cars fly and they run the light, I believe the light should be brought back. Such comments, I, I won't read all of them, or we would be here until the wee hours in the morning. This was my daughter's car. Yes, she is okay. Something needs to be done before someone is really hurt or killed at this intersection. For the life of me, I don't understand why they stopped the light from working. It wasn't bothering anyone. I know that the Service Safety Director has communicated to others that this light cannot be working, but something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. I can read these comments to you guys all night. My point here tonight is, you can do stuff. I know we've talked to Paul, we've talked about putting in the pedestrian crossing at the red and white and at Broad and Hubert, but there's another thing you can do, and you can do it pretty quick. You can go down tomorrow morning, remove the 35 mile per hour speed limit sign, and put one up that says 25 miles per hour. I know you've been on the road on Broad Street, Paul, and I don't know how many other council members have. Traffic is not an issue, we have plenty of it. The issue is, people, the drivers, may be at fault, I don't know, but it seems there's more and more problems since the light went down. This morning, I got a comment from a gentleman who crosses Broad Street there at Broad and Hubert almost daily. Because the roads are getting bad, they're having a really hard time, like this morning, getting across Broad. They don't have enough time to get in between the cars to make it across Broad. And as the roads get, get more and more snow-covered or icy, it's even going to be harder for them. They don't have a car, they do not have the option to drive down to Dollar General or to the Salvation Army. So we need to do something to help these folks out. I don't care if you just go tomorrow and reduce that speed limit, but it needs to be taken care of immediately. The Block Watch from Standpoint of the Neighbors, we're not seeing any progress. We need things done now, not a year from now, not in May when your year study's done. But we want to see some progress take place soon. So if you could, I know you can reduce the speed limit, and it really does need to happen soon before someone does seriously get hurt at that intersection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Probasco. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Yes, ma'am. Please go right ahead, and you can sign in afterward if you haven't already.
Okay. My name is Sharon Hopkins. I live over on 306 Thomas Avenue. And what Debbie was talking about, yes, it was my daughter that was in that accident. We both used to live in that area when it was a traffic light, and we both have moved away since. I don't go down there because I knew of the change. She did not, so she was in the accident. So, I mean, it's a simple fix. If you're doing this study, you don't have the money to put the traffic light back, make it a four-way stop for all of it. Put signage up. There is no signs posted anywhere that you change the lighting. So she was, you know, don't go down there, so she was not aware of this. You know, there's simple little things that you guys can do that don't cost a lot of money. Four-way stops, signage, and then again, the speed limit. But something does need to be done before somebody gets killed, and then it's going to be the city of Lancaster's responsibility to explain to that family member, oh, we didn't do what we needed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, please be sure that you sign in. Is there anyone else who would like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? Well, thank each of you for being here tonight at our meeting. Are there reports of standing committees?
I have one. Finance Committee meeting minutes for December 16, 2019 submitted by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of Temporary Resolution 140-19.
A resolution to make appropriations for current 2020 budget expenses and other expenditures of the city of Lancaster, State of Ohio for the fiscal year 2020, and to establish line item transfer authority for departments offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council amend Resolution Temporary 140-19 by replacing it with 140-19* as given to the clerk in writing prior to the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend Temporary Resolution 140-19 and replace it with Temporary Resolution 140-19* as given to the clerk in writing prior to tonight's meeting. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this, uh, the, the change is the budget as it is right now. There's been quite a few amendments since we first saw this, I believe, uh, on November the 4th, so, uh, we need to get the proper budget into the legislation.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion on the motion to amend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
The motion to amend passes. We now have before us Temporary Resolution 140-19*. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the, the written record, uh, Resolution Temporary 140-19*.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 140-19*. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Uh, well, I'm going to defer to the mayor just for a couple of comments from him. We had a good discussion in finance, we've had three meetings to consider this, and this budget was particularly difficult because, um, you know, we, we have, uh, obviously a very tight financial set in the general fund, so, Mayor Scheffler, if you'd like to offer some comments, and I'll close it up.
You want to cut me off when I'm going far enough?
I will.
Okay. So, um, the total budget proposed for 2020 is $126,850,000. Last year's approved budget was $131,655,000, so a reduction of nearly $5 million. The general fund, uh, proposed is $20,820,000. Last year's budget was $20,317,000. Police and fire budget, uh, just the police and fire, proposed $19,237,000. Last year was $18,651,000. We had a number of items that had big impacts on the budget. Our health insurance premiums increased by $1.1 million, fueled by some negative experience in claims for 2018 and 2019. So the city will pay $8.065 million for health insurance premiums in 2020. Uh, the budget includes no pay increases for management and non-union employees other than program step and longevity increases. Union employees, police, fire, Comtechs, and AFSCME employees will receive their contracted wage increases. The general fund departments are, uh, several are experiencing high levels of retirement in 2020, which means that they have to pay out accumulated unused leave days, and for fire, that's $282,000, uh, or, I'm sorry, police is $282,000, fire $110,000, and for engineering, $40,000. Police and fire salary and budget line items increased $1.4 million over expected 19 expenditures due to contracted wage and health insurance increases and retirement payouts. We have reduced the authorized staffing for both police and fire by three staff members, uh, and that would be from 69 to 66 for police, and from 70 to 67 for fire. One of the budget line items that we've cut is replacing patrol cars, which were on a normal program to every year or two to replace three because they get such high mileage in city driving, and so eventually that's going to drive up our maintenance costs pretty significantly, but we don't have the money to do that. The reduced staffing in police and fire will have a big impact on city residents, uh, and that includes not responding to lockouts unless a child is locked inside, uh, no more investigating private property vehicle accidents unless an injury is involved, no dedicated parking enforcement unless a complaint is filed, color guard appearances will be limited to only the July 4th and holiday parades, police presence at community events such as Halloween will be reduced, community calendars will be eliminated, and no Citizens Police Academy will be held. On the fireside, most of the impact will be in reduced or delayed fire inspections. Some other highlights, uh, the special, the enterprise and special funds, uh, are sound, financially sound and stable. The city general fund cannot access any money in enterprise and special funds because they're locked in by state law. General fund department heads work diligently to reduce controllable budget items, um, along with, uh, the administration order pay freezes, and I believe the first budget we, uh, brought to council, the general fund, was $22 million. It's now, uh, $20.8 million, so we cut out $1.2 million. Cash carryover from '19 to '20, it will be a little higher than we estimated early in the year because we had some one-time windfalls, including workers' compensation refund of $450,000, half of which belonged to the general fund. We had higher investment returns than expected, and our reimbursed services were higher. Also, uh, court costs and real estate tax revenue were up from expected levels. Currently, estimated general fund revenue will be around $20 million versus what we expected at the beginning of the year of $19.1 million. General fund expenses will be around $20 million versus the budget for '19 was $20.3 million. We obviously won't know the exact numbers until after the end of the year. In the budget, there is, uh, some new funds created for police and fire, and that's budget pages 11 and 12, and they replace a transfer line item because in the past, we transferred general fund monies to account 246 and 247. This year, we'll be handling those in the general fund. Uh, street department had a $1.1 million increase in budget, which is great for our streets. Uh- Street Department had a $1.1 million increase in budget, which is great for our streets. This comes from the gas tax that the state legislature passed in their biennium budget in June, and also from the $5 permissive tax on the license plate fees. So that will be programmed into street repaving, repairs, upgrades, et cetera, for 2020.
That was well done. And we needed, I needed you to do that a second time because, you know, we had good discussion in finance. The other part is, for those watching in the finance minutes from tonight, this attachment that has a lot of this information is included that, so you can find that information on the website as well. So I want to thank you for the difficult work this was in October and November in getting to this point. Obviously, cutting positions, doing more with less is going to create, you know, it's going to create some stress in police and fire. This seems an awful lot like 2009, 2010, 2011, but, you know, it is what it is, and I appreciate the efforts that you and your team and in the leadership of the city did to get a budget that we could pass that has minimal, you know, minimal impacts in the cuts because the first budget you brought us, the cuts were much bigger. So I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Mr. Woodger.
Well, a couple of questions. Are there any actual new positions in this budget?
There are, will be two additional employees. One would be in the street department, a traffic control supervisor. That is an authorized position that hasn't been filled for several years because, over the years, revenue to the street department dropped because of higher gas mileage, fewer people driving. So cuts were made, I think Mr. Hint said earlier, that in 2004, we had 32 employees in the street department, and in addition to the traffic control supervisor, we'll be hiring four additional crew members who will work on street repairs. So that will bring us up to 28, so still four below. And the one other position I know is in the income tax department, we had traditionally hired temporary help during the busy season through a temp agency. We will be hiring a part-time clerk to alleviate some of the busy work that our tax auditors are doing, like opening mail, addressing mail, stamping mail, so they can concentrate on increasing revenue and finding nonfilers and underpayers, et cetera.
Okay. Mr. Woodger, you said a couple of questions?
And a second question, the new assistant in the transit, is that coming out of general fund?
No, no. In general fund, if you look on page one of the budget, it is about a half, a third way down the page, transferred to public transit, $73,000. It's been the same for the last four years. That will be funded out of grant and fares.
That's, okay. My understanding was that particular position has always come out of general fund. That's funded out of grants and fares? I thought that's one thing the general fund paid for was the administrator.
Nope.
General fund, if I might, is always, we have to, we have to participate, or we're not eligible for the grants.
Right.
State of Ohio program. That number's been $73,000 for the longest that I can remember.
Nothing more than $73,000 has ever come out of the general fund for public transit.
I'm just clearing up. That's not covered by grants. That's covered, that has to come out of general fund because they use that for matching, right?
Well, however they, I don't know how they spend it, but we have to.
It's administrative, but we use it to help with our matching funds.
Correct, yeah. So you could say something that costs $73,000 is paid for by the general fund, but we have to participate, and believe it or not, I'm shocked it's not a higher number based on the, based on the size of the budget. I am stunned they haven't had us drive up the participation from the general fund.
I see Ms. Teener's hand here, but it's okay. I just want to get all questions out, and so we're going to just let Mr. Woodger go if he has anything else.
I'm fine.
You're finished? Okay, great. Ms. Teener.
I think, are you thinking about the assistant one? That, the assistant. So that's coming out of grants.
The assistant's coming out of the transit budget, where it's always come from. All right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yes, Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, I apologize. The entire transit budget is grants and contracts that the transit department makes. The only influx from the city is the $73,000 we are required by the state of Ohio to participate to be in the transit program. So however we spend that $73,000 is immaterial, we have to participate, or we don't get any money.
Goes into the big transit pot.
Yes, it's a good way to describe it.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to pass?
I just have a question. So the, the health insurance, if I remember correctly, our contract for health insurance is locked in until June. Is that correct?
Right, and we have, we all have issued notice that we're withdrawing from that contract effective June 30th, and we are pursuing other carriers. We've had a number of meetings, and we anticipate better results.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you, Ms. Downhour. Other questions or comments before we move to the question? Yes, Ms. Teener.
The income tax person, now, I know we got the, you know, the state letter from, I think, where she sent us the, but I don't think there was a dollar amount in there. But I thought that we would have comparison, because this person is going to work all year long as opposed to.
Yeah, this person will work every day, yeah, all year long. The total cost of that person, including PERS, workers' comp, Medicare, and their wages, is just under $18,000.
For the entire year.
For the entire year, right.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Teener. Further questions or comments? If not, before we call for the vote, I'll just echo Mr. Stoughton's comments and say thank you to the mayor and the administration, and each one of the department heads that worked through, one, minimizing expense throughout the end of this year, and then working with us on reductions for the coming year. There are going to be cuts to services in this budget, but I think the administration has done well to do all they can to minimize that as we continue forward to put a balanced budget together. So thank you for your work. Yes.
Well, I'd like to pass that thanks on to some of my staff, including Treasurer Wolfinger, Auditor Nettles, and all the department heads who went to great lengths to find areas that they could reduce their expenses. Obviously, Service Safety Director Martin, don't want to forget him.
Yes, well, we appreciate each of you and the work you've done. All right then, all hearts are clear, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
It's been a while.
I know. It's okay.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodger?
No.
Temporary Resolution 140-19* passes six to three. We now have second reading on Temporary Resolution 142-19.
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend section 183.012, 183.013, and 183.002 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to increase the city income tax rate by forty-five hundredths of one percent, .45 percent, from the current rate of one and seventy-five hundredth percent, 1.75 percent, to a rate of two and twenty hundredth percent, 2.20 percent, beginning January 1, 2021, and to specify the allocation of funds from such taxes, declaring an emergency waiver by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to withdraw Resolution Temporary 142-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw Temporary Resolution 142-19. Motion to withdraw is not debatable. We'll get some additional context as to why this is being withdrawn later on in the meeting. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 142-19 is withdrawn. We now have the first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 145-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids and enter into a construction agreement for the improvement project known as the 2020 Street Improvement Paving Program, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on Temporary Resolution 145-19. Temporary Resolution 146-19.
A resolution authorizing the service safety director to advertise for bids for the Memorial Drive Cover Repair Project, offered by Mr. Woodger, second by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Woodger.
First reading, please.
First reading on Temporary Resolution 146-19. Temporary Resolution 147-19.
A resolution to enter into preliminary legislation for the installation of a traffic signal at State Route 188 at the intersection with Delmont Road and the city Lancaster's Mill Park Drive for PID number 111072, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 147-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 147-19. Mr. Schoonover, discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to have Engineer Nolan come up and explain why we're asking for suspension on this piece.
Thank you. Mr. Nolan.
Yes, the reason for this essentially is ODOT is sending us this legislation to get passed for this project to move forward. It's currently under design. It's one thing I didn't mention during Finance Committee. It's expected that we would have this signal into operation probably in the fall of 2020. So the current estimate is $183,000. We have a $200,000 Transportation Improvement District grant to pay for that through ODOT and various entities involved, as well as the Fairfield County Transportation Improvement District. So this is something that was requested by ODOT. They need this legislation to keep the project moving, get it out to bid, and that's the purpose of the suspension.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Mr. Schoonover, you have anything else before we call the roll?
No.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 147-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record Temporary Resolution 147-19. Further discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
I have none.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 147-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 148-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for the purpose of constructing the Fair CR 5404.90 Fair Avenue roadway improvements, High Street to Sheridan Drive, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mrs., or excuse me, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third readings of Temporary Resolution 148-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 148-19. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover.
Yeah, I'm going to have City Engineer Nolan come back up to discuss reason for suspension.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is something that, again, discussed in Finance Committee. We are doing some switching around with our STP dollars, originally programmed for the Fair Avenue project from Memorial to High. We're switching this over to the High, to Sheridan Drive section due to multiple other projects that are happening in the generalized area to help out with our maintenance of traffic effort. But this is something here that we need to get our, an agreement to ODOT for the mayor to enter into an agreement with them, and, but we will be using our STP dollars on this section of Fair Avenue, which is a 95-5 split, similar to Pierce Avenue and North Union and some of those other projects that have happened in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. Further questions or comments on the motions to suspend? Anything else, Mr. Schoonover?
Nope.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 148-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 149-19.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation for the purpose of construction of the FAICR 5404.90 Fair Avenue roadway improvements, High Street to Sheridan Drive, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover. First of three readings, please.
First reading on Temporary Resolution 149-19. Temporary Resolution 150-19.
A resolution to amend appropriation budgets and amend the certificate of other sources and appropriations with the county auditor, offered by Mr. Stoughton, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary 150-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 150-19. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Because of the timing that this needs to be to the auditor prior to the end of the year, and this is our final meeting, I need to ask for suspension, but this is a, basically a budget, expense budget cleanup piece which aligns expenses to, or the budget to the expenses with the county auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Stoughton. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodger?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record Resolution Temporary 150-19.
Second.
to... or the budget to the expenses with the county auditor.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporary 150-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 150-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Other discussion around the table? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 150-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 151-19.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director and Lancaster Department of Transportation Superintendent to engage in an intra-departmental loan for the construction of a fixed canopy over the Lancaster Fuel Depot as required by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, offered by Mr. Schoonover, second by Mrs. Bobbitt.
Mr. Schoonover.
First of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary resolution 151-19. Temporary resolution 152-19.
A resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend Section 183.012, 183.013, and 183.02, the codified ordinances of the City of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to provide for the levy of a 45-hundredth of 1%, .45% tax effective January 1st, 2021, and continuing thereafter on these sales, wages, commissions, and other compensations subject to the municipal income tax, with all such tax to be used for purpose of operating, maintaining, repairing, and providing capital facilities for the Fire and Police Department of the city, and to declare an emergency, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of resolution temporary 152-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of temporary resolution 152-19. Discussion, Mr. Stotin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We introduced a... the income tax levy on the 25th, which was different than what we have today. As opposed to amending it, we... we, being the city, rewrote it to simplify it and effectively let the electorate know that all .45% of this income tax increase will be provided to the safety forces, which will then fund in turn the fourth medic, which will have 12 personnel on it, and it will also fund a sergeant and three patrol officers in the police department, while also bringing the staffing that we discussed in the budget being down by three headcount in each department back up to their full manpower, and then adding the staff positions on top of that. So, the focus went from just a general income tax for consumption to a specific income tax specific for the safety forces. Because we need to have it to the Board of Elections by the 18th, I need to ask for a suspension.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record resolution temporary 152-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 152-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thank you.
Other discussion around the table this evening? Please call the... oh, I see. No, you barely made it in, right under the wire. Yes, go ahead.
So, this will exclusively go through police and fire, nothing else?
True.
Nothing?
That is accurate. Yes, a dedicated levy, the whole thing. Okay, Mr. Woodard.
Well, I'd like to commend the administration for changing this to be just police and fire. I think that's more favorable of what the community would want, although I do have some definite concerns. I feel that council should have had a special meeting immediately following the election, not of Finance Committee, but of council. Should have brought in the committee that originally recommended that we do something, discuss with them the results and what they felt the best next move was. Even though we are blaming them for the amount that we're asking for, if I remember correctly, the seven possibilities they gave us did not necessarily mention a .45 as one of the alternatives. So, I have some concerns that we haven't really addressed the public concerns of... that showed a tremendous defeat of the original issue.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just to refer Mrs. Teener, have you just really looked at the last three lines of the subject where it says to be used for the purpose of operating, et cetera, et cetera, facilities for the Fire and Police Departments of the city, so specifically being dedicated to those two departments?
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Further discussion, Mr. Graff?
Yeah, just one question. Since this was not a priority before for the entire 4... .45, and there are other things that, you know, I believe I see in the budget that, you know, are still going to be getting money based on what it was before, is there any money in the budget before that went to the police department that will not be going to the police department now because it's been coming from this .45?
Mr. Stotin's waving his hand as though to suggest he can answer it. If you're okay with that, we'll go to Mr. Stotin.
Yeah, I mean, there are two dedicated funding sources in the general fund. Both of them are income tax, past income tax levies by the voter. One's .45 back in 1995, maybe, and the second one is the .15, but both of those collectively together do not fund the operations as they sit today. There's actually an influx of general fund money that goes in to fund that. These monies, all collectively together, will all go to fund police and fire, so none of it will be taken out and used otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Stotin. Mr. Mayor, you leaned up as though you wanted to chime in as well?
Right now, the general fund provides 12.1 million in... under this budget that was passed earlier to safety forces, and that, obviously, we... the... safety forces require a larger and larger portion of the general fund every year, so getting this $5 million to the safety forces directly will alleviate the drain on the general fund for other services that are provided to the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see your hand, Mr. Woodard. Is there anyone else that hasn't spoken yet on the budget that would like to do so before we head back to Mr. Woodard? Please, sir.
So, basically, what we're saying is that we're telling the public, oh, this money's going to police and fire, but that, basically, it's going to relieve the general fund to take care of the other things that were in the original issue, correct?
In addition to that, there is 1.3 million dollars to add a fourth medic, which takes 12 firefighters and supplies costing 1.3 million, to add four police officers, a sergeant and three officers in a directed patrol unit, in addition to restoring the three authorized positions or previously authorized positions in police and fire that were eliminated in this year's budget. So, police and fire are going to benefit significantly from this, but it will relieve some of the general fund money that is taken now to fund police and fire operations.
I agree that you're very right in your statement. My comment is that, basically, still, we're going to be doing everything that we were going to be doing last... with the last election with the funds. We're just saying now we'll take all the police and fire out there, but that will relieve money in the general fund to do those other things, like the $100,000 for transit and so on and so forth. And I just think the public needs to be aware of that. Some of it's a possibility of ceramics.
Okay. If I could... Mr. McDaniel?
I think, to finish the mayor's thought, I don't think he included the total. We're talking about 15 additional firefighters, replacing three, adding 12. Adding 12 more, right. And we're talking about seven additional police officers from where we are for the 2020 budget. We're going backwards in our safety forces. I think it's our... the city's number-one responsibility is provide safety for this community. We're going backwards. Now, the community gets an opportunity to decide where they want to go from here. And I think, you know, my vote is we want safe streets, we want fire protection, we want other services the city provides, and this will allow us to free some money up in some of the other areas in addition to safety, but primarily, this is all about safety.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Further discussion on the motion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
No.
Temporary resolution 152-19 passes seven to two.
Six to three.
No, seven to two. Seven to two, right? Yes, thank you. All right, moving on. Are there other resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with the second reading of temporary ordinance 26-19.
An ordinance to establish the benefits titles and compensation for the Information Technology Administrator of the Clerk of Courts employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio, commencing the first paid period of 2020, and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stotin.
As soon as I get there.
You take your time.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary 26-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 26-19. Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the Information Technology Administrator for the Clerk of Courts. This is funded by the Clerk of Courts, and... I believe that's all I have.
A concise synopsis, thank you, Mr. Stotin. Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporary 26-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 26-19. Further discussion, Mr. Stotin?
No, thanks.
Other discussion on the motion to pass?
Well, I think we need to point out that this is not general fund money. I mean, it's being refunded to us.
Okay, thank you very much. Mrs. Teener, I saw your... never mind. Okay, anyone else? Discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance 26-19 passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance 27-19.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles, and compensation for transit personnel employed by the City of Lancaster, Ohio, for the year 2020, offered by Mr. Stotin, second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stotin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary 27-19, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance 27-19. Discussion, Mr. Stotin?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We discussed a few times on the floor of council specifically about public transit and the fact the need to keep transit going at a cost-effective rate was to bring it in-house, understanding that it is funded entirely, or nearly entirely, by grants and contracts, but the cheaper way to do that was to manage that ourselves. Therefore, we have a ordinance that is the pay ordinance for the transit employees.
Thank you very much. Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend? Yes, Mrs. Teener? Okay, we're gonna hold that discussion for the motion to pass. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stotin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporary 27-19, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance 27-19. Discussion, Mr. Stotin?
Nothing further?
Other discussion. Hey, I know Mrs. Teener had something. Go ahead.
Yes, so, I did want to kind of ask, and I've been thinking about this. When we were talking about putting grants, Ride Right wanted too much, and so that's why we brought it in-house. But had we already had all the loops, did we add things on after, you know, like we had given Ride Right however that works? I mean, did we add the money through, what, Friday nights? We added a Sunday, we offer it up for the festival and all that. I mean, so that was more money coming out? I mean, is that why they asked for more?
C-Director Woody heading this way? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, President. We'll... I will try to address that, Councilman Teener. All of the services that were added were already added into 2019's budget, so the services didn't change in scope of service for the Ride Right or the proposal from any contractor. The scope did not change from 2019 what we were doing as we requested proposals for 2019 and going forward.
So, like, with the festival, we do that, that's hours and hours of gas, and are these people paying when they use that, or is this a service we're offering?
So, for the festival specifically?
Or anything that's...
So, I guess I would want you to be a little more specific. For the festival? No, we do not request any fares for that. We do pay the drivers, and that's something that Ride Right, we paid Ride Right for. We did reimburse them for any hours that they spent.
So, the festival doesn't reimburse for the, I don't know, the hourly rate wage?
No, we've never asked them to help reimburse any of those costs.
So, if somebody wants to go to the doctor, how much is that if you have an appointment? If somebody comes in, how much is that for us, the original person?
So, if someone wants to go to the doctor, if they are just general public, it's $2 each way, as long as they make an advanced reservation, at least 24 hours in advance. If they are elderly or permanently disabled, then they pay a dollar each way.
What, and was there something that was 15?
If you go outside of the county, because we don't receive any local match money from outside of the county, then it's based on mileage, because we don't receive any of those state or federal grants to help reimburse the cost of what it's costing us to operate outside of the county.
Thank you, Ms. Woody. Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
Even though I think Tom... Tom already mentioned this, and if Carrie's standing there, what we were faced with was, you know, because I personally do not want to take on any new city employees, but what we were faced with as a council was either to do this or pay Ride... pay Ride Right, correct me if I'm wrong, 400,000 more dollars.
Correct.
Correct? So, that's what we were faced with as a council. So, $400,000 more, or we don't have the city transit at all. So, we've decided to, with this piece, take on these city employees, and we're able to pay them a little bit more money also. They are part-time employees, no benefits.
So, there are some benefits. They will accrue sick time, but they don't have health insurance. That's the most cost prohibitive benefit. They wouldn't have that.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Graff?
Based on Ms. Bobbitt's question, I would like to ask her. She personally doesn't agree with adding the number of city employees, and it was either pay 400,000 more or do away with it. I still believe there were other options there as far as reduced services, not running countywide. There were a number of things that you could look at that in reducing that, you know, Ride Right may have been less, and that difference may not have been as much. There's also the situation that while I agree that it's nice to have a countywide transit, I don't see that as a responsibility of the city and the liabilities that we're taking on by making them city employees. I see that, if it's going to be countywide, as being the responsibility of the county, that the county should be more I don't see that as a responsibility of the city and the liabilities that we're taking on by making them city employees. I see that if it's going to be countywide as being the responsibility of the county, that the county should be more involved in this, and it should be a county transit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Groff. Ms. Bobbitt, I see your hand. I'm gonna give others that have not yet had opportunity to address this to do so first, and we'll come back to you.
I forgot one.
We'll get back to you, I promise. Mr. Stot.
Thank you. All right, so, again, the only participation by this Lancaster City is the $73,000. We've made it acutely clear, because as Mrs. Bobbitt is not a fan of adding headcount, nor am I, in the event that we were to lose a contract of revenue, then Ms. Woody is well aware that she has to cut her way to absorb that loss, there will be no additional funding coming from the general fund. So, whether it's, whether it's Lancaster only, you know, one loop and calls, or countywide is immaterial in so much as she has the contracts in place to run the, run the transit system in the most optimal way possible. It was pretty clear from Ride Right, they didn't want to be our provider, and nobody else actually bid on the project as well. So, if we would've reduced it, it still would've been significantly higher than we could've done it in-house. So, whether it's a small transit system, or a countywide transit system, or what we currently have, which is a kind of a hybrid system today, in my opinion, is immaterial, and at the end of the day, we're still only funding it $73,000. It's Ms. Woody's job to, to manage the revenue and expenses, understanding that there is no more money coming from the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Stot. Other discussion before we head back. Wanna head to Ms. Bobbitt?
That was, that was gonna be my point that I forgot. All of this is paid for by the grant. We're only paying out the same $73,000 that we've paid out for the past at least five years.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bobbitt. I saw Mr. Martin's hand over there.
So, I would be in favor of us moving towards the county. It's something that we haven't started talking about, but it's something I would pursue. But, you know, we cannot, we'd have to just gain conversation to see how that would work out, but some other counties. But right now, transit is needed, and we have the funding to cover so much area in our county, and I think it would be a disservice if we stopped it. So, I think at this time, we should continue it, and that's why we're very much in favor of this. But I think maybe in the future, we could talk about that and see if we can see how that works out.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Further discussion on the motion to pass?
Just, Mr. President, just a point. This was mentioned, but I think that it's really important. We had a number of employees working at what was potentially less than a living wage, and we're able to maintain our commitment and improve the quality of lives of people working on behalf of the city of Lancaster. So, I think that's a really important point. The second piece is, and maybe this is just a long-term issue, but I'm wondering if there's a way that we could create some sort of local entity in the long-term outside of the city of Lancaster that could serve, in essence, at the same function that Ride Right has historically served for the city. Maybe not, but it's, it's just something to consider as a developmental issue to protect the city's budget in the event that something catastrophic does happen in terms of some of our grant funding.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Further discussion on the motion to pass? No? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Excuse me, real quick, this is the motion to suspend, right?
We're on the motion to pass, I believe. We already suspended.
We hadn't done, had we voted on the suspension?
Yes, sir, I believe everyone voted to suspend. Am I wrong?
Everybody voted to suspend.
Everyone voted. Wait, we're on, we're on a motion to pass, Mr. Groff, you're on. Mr. Groff, so no.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-seven dash nineteen passes seven to two. Temporary ordinance twenty-eight dash nineteen.
An ordinance to establish benefits, titles and compensation for those employees who are not members of the recognized bargaining units employed by the city of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2020, and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stot and second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to council to suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-eight nineteen, please.
Second. A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-eight dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the, the, what's called the non-management, non-union pay ordinance. The only addition here is the addition of a part-time tax clerk for 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Stot. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Mr. McDaniel.
I just want to readdress what the mayor spoke about. These ordinances, the next two we're addressing include no pay raise for these individuals, and, you know, our budget dictates that, but I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-eight dash nineteen passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance twenty-nine dash nineteen.
An ordinance to establish the benefits, titles and compensation for management and professional personnel employed by the city of Lancaster, Ohio for the year 2020, and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stot and second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to council to suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary twenty-nine nineteen, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gro, I'm sorry, to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance twenty-nine dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stot.
Yes, Mr. President. This is the management pay ordinance, with the only changes being a reduction for the part, or the part-time executive director of community development block grant, and the addition of the transit assistant director, which is part of the in-house transit system, but not paid for by the general fund.
Thank you, Mr. Stot. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion to council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporary twenty-nine nineteen, please.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance twenty-nine dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stot.
Nothing further.
Any discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance twenty-nine dash nineteen passes eight to one. Temporary ordinance thirty dash nineteen.
An ordinance to establish the compensation for elected officials, including the mayor, auditor, council president, council members and council clerk, and to maintain a full-time law director for the term commencing payroll one of 2020, offered by Mr. Stot and second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council to suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary thirty nineteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stot.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The reason for suspension on all these is because we have to have them in by the end of the year, and this is our last meeting. In this particular case, the mayor and the law, auditor and law director all have been frozen for 2020 and 2021 at their current rate. 2022 and 23 are both 2% increases, so, and then council and council clerk are the same. So, those are the changes in the pay, in the elected official pay ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Stot. Further discussion on the motion to suspend? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Motion to suspend passes nine to zero. Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to council to suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary thirty nineteen.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary ordinance thirty dash nineteen. Discussion, Mr. Stot.
Nothing further, please.
Other discussion around the table? Mr. Woodard.
Just a question. I noticed we have our clerk included in this one. She's not an ele, she's elected by us, but not by the public. Is that correct to have her in this particular ordinance?
Yes.
Just a question on that, because everybody else is elected by the public. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woodard. I'm being informed it's always been that way, so we can take a look and see if that's where it should be for the future, but I think that's where it's been.
Yeah, that just looks like we're saying all the elected officials, and technically she's appointed.
Sure.
Mr. President?
Yes, Ms. Teener.
She's appointed by the, she's appointed by the council, which is the people that are being paid in the elected ordinance. I think it, I think it does belong here, but we'll check.
We should check it.
Yep, we will check it out. Thank you, Mr. Woodard. Further discussion on the motion to pass? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
No.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-one dash nineteen passes seven to two. Temporary ordinance thirty-one dash nineteen.
An ordinance to amend section 183.012, 183.013 and 183.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to increase the city income tax rate by forty-five hundredths of 1%, 4.45% from the current rate of 1 and seventy-five hundredths percent, 1.75%, to a rate of 2 and 20 hundredths percent, 2.20%, beginning January 1st, 2021, and to specify the allocation of funds from such tax and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stot and second by Mrs. Downhour.
Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council withdraw ordinance temporary thirty-one nineteen, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to withdraw temporary ordinance thirty-one dash nineteen. Motion withdrawal is not debatable. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Downhour?
Yes.
Mr. Groff?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stotin?
Yes.
Mrs. Teener?
No.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-one dash nineteen has been withdrawn. We don't have first reading on temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen.
An ordinance to amend section 183.012, 183.013 and 183.02 of the codified ordinances of the city of Lancaster, Ohio, in order to provide for the levy of an additional forty-five hundredths of 1%, 0.45% income tax effective January 1st, 2021, on the salaries, wages, commissions and other compensations subject to the municipal income tax and all other such tax to be used for the purpose of operating, maintaining, repairing and providing capital facilities for the fire and police department of the city and to declare an emergency offered by Mr. Stot and second by Mr. McDaniel.
Mr. Stot.
Thank you, Mr. President. This will be the first of three readings, please.
First of three readings on temporary ordinance thirty-two dash nineteen. Are there further ordinances to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? Seeing none, as we look at tabled legislation, I believe all this is to remain on the table, and note, there is a public hearing on temporary ordinance twenty-nine nineteen star on January 13th here in council chambers at 6:30. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Ms. Downhour.
Yes, if I could defer to Service Safety Director Paul Martin, if he could please provide an update on the traffic light at Broad and Hubert and where we are in the remaining data that needs to be obtained, et cetera.
Thank you. Mr. Martin.
So, can I ask, I know we have some in the audience, is there anybody that is here in regards to this light at Hubert? I'd just love for you to stand. I know some that have already left, but I appreciate your attendance and appreciate, I think it was Sharon and Debbie, and their comments. Thank you very much. So, yes, Debbie did kinda tell you, we did in the last three weeks have two accidents. They were cited for failure to yield. They came to the stop signs at Hubert, proceeded out. One was crossing all the way over, one was turning north and was hit by a vehicle. We are grateful that no one was hurt. But one of the things I learned from it, just looking into it, reading the witness statements, those were some, both of the people that went through the stop sign thought that it was a four-way stop when it wasn't. And so, the light is blinking red, legally speaking, as a stop sign. So, I do think that is something of concern for me. So, in the meantime, even as I was kinda communicating here with Tim Deets, with L. Dot, who is in charge of our signs and our signals at L. Dot, you know, I found out that we can put up at this time, I'm not saying this is a permanent solution, but I'd like to put up two signs on Hubert saying this is not a four-way or something more clarifying. It could help for those that approach that at this time in the meantime. We are done collecting data. I know that I have mentioned to the Block Watch group, both the mayor attended a separate time than I did, but one of the things I mentioned, you know, typically, when we're getting ready to put up a light, we'll do about a year of data study. That is not what I was gonna say we were gonna do here, but I appreciate her comments. We are done collecting data. I'm planning to have a meeting with Tim Deets about this. We have a lot of video to look at. It is a little more daunting than one would think. We, Tim worked last night to cover the so, snow through the night. He'll probably be in tonight as well, so I'm, I'm gonna try to do this as much as possible, understanding Christmas and our holiday season is here. So, no, I don't wanna decide this till May, just wanna reassure the public of that. The, some, I think Sharon had mentioned to me that she thought it would be a good idea to go with a four-way stop, and I would, I would have to say, the biggest reason that would be a struggle is because on Broad Street, we have turn lanes going, you know, right, left turn, right, you know, as you look at it, you have three lanes, and, and that is gonna create another problem if I, if we make it a, a four-way stop. I don't really think the data was supportive, but that is something we're gonna go into and look at. If we did go with a four, four-way stop option, we would have to do some realignment or do things on those parts. I did approach the group at the Block Watch program, that, yes, I did pitch the idea of doing a similar, safe, protective crossing like what we have at Cherry Street Pub on Cherry Street, and it has worked well. The group that showed up that night would choose, you know, and I asked them individually to engage with me, it's about 15 people, and they all would just soon, I flipped the switch and turned the light back on. But I think as I heard from Debbie and Sharon, that they did hear what I had to say, that the light was not functioning correctly. The problem I have right now is the water line came in on Hubert, and we have a loop line that actually causes the Hubert traffic as they approach Hubert to signal the light to turn for those has been severed. And replacing that water line was a big deal. It was very important. So, I can't flip the switch today. I'm not saying that's my decision, but I'm just letting you all know that we will be looking at everything. I'm, I'm a little, it's a real struggle. There are many people that want the light down. I get that, and there are people that definitely passionately would like the, the light to stay up. It is about an $80,000 improvement if we were to take that down and, and do it to our standards. You can see Columbus and Fair Avenue is a standard of what we would do in a, in a signalized section, where I, I'd mentioned that whatever we do, I'd like to have safe pedestrian crossing no matter what we do, and to have a ADA ramp to go on the north side of Hubert Crossing Over. I offered also, and I think we'll do this no matter what, finish that sidewalk to go into the church so that they could get to, you know, the stores that are down there, Dollar General and whatever. So, I do wanna do something. I will say that it's obvious the blinking light is causing a problem. To turn it back on, flip the switch, as I say, means that people are gonna stop on Broad and look at no traffic on Hubert today. And if you ever done that, it's very frustrating. Now, even with great advancement we have, we still have some issues at times that we have to address on that. We had some issues of that at the new Fairfield Medical Center on Memorial Drive. We had that light having some conflicts. So, I think that would be frustrating and would cause another group of people very disappointed about that decision. Safety is an issue for all of us. We do want people to be safe. But I really need to look at this data, and if I were to say that we put a fully signalized light, we'd have to take that other one down. We don't have that product ordered anyway. But I've heard this, people are going on Broad, and they see the yellow blinking, and that is go-through. The ones on Hubert see red, and they're thinking, so I could put a sign below the stop sign that said not a four-way stop, could maybe help. But you still have that problem with that blinking light, and I can tell you other places in the city that some people don't necessarily know the law, they know what they should or shouldn't do, but even with a perfect signalized or non-signalized stop sign, two-way, four-way, we still have people that just make mistakes, me included in my history of life. But I would have to say that we need to think about this, and I would almost am going to think about bagging the lights and not have them blink at all, and have ready to realize that's a stop sign. And that would be another solution I'm looking at. I'm not going to make any commitment here tonight to anybody, but I appreciate you, Ms. Downhour. I know it's in your ward. You and I have talked personally. I've spent time with Debbie, and I appreciate her in so many ways, so it is a difficult decision, you know, to count those that are wanting the light up and those that don't. I'm not going to get into that number, because a lot of people don't live in that area, might say take the light down. So, I'm not going to let that sway me. I want to try to do a well-informed decision. I'm sorry for the time we're spending here at council about it. I've talked to President Newell about it as well, and others in here, but it's, you know, to some that are opposing us to do anything, it's very simple, just turn the switch back on. It's not that simple to me, and I'm sorry for the delay, but we will not be here till May. We will try to resolve this as soon as I can.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Yes, Ms. Bobbitt?
I just have a couple of questions. I know during public works meeting, and I believe here on council floor, you said probably a new light around 70,000? Is that what it is?
Seventy to 80,000.
Seventy-eight thousand.
Depends on what else we do.
Okay.
Because then you're talking improvements to the intersection, I mean, ADA and productive pedestrian crossings. That signal right now provides no productive crossing. There's no button to push.
Right.
So, if we do upgrade it, we're going to make it right in that aspect, and that would be the funnest of what I'm doing to make sure we do that, is their request.
Okay, then my other request, they mentioned 25 miles an hour. Is that still state route, and was it 35 because it was a state route down there?
Well, I don't think technically that section is a state route. I'd have to get that verified.
Can I answer that?
Yes.
Based on my previous position of the city, I have a little bit of expertise in the area. Any roadway that's more than a mile long and controlled by traffic control devices inside the city limits is automatically by state law 35 miles an hour outside business district. So, it's nearly impossible to change that to 25 miles an hour. If we would post it at 25 miles an hour, which you could do, Mr. Director, police officers would still only be able to enforce 35 miles an hour. So, they would write a ticket something like this, 42 miles an hour in a 35 mile an hour zone, post it 25, and the judge looks at it and says, what is this? Because we've had it before. So, we can legally post it 25, but it can't be enforced at 25. So, we're kind of, state law does that to us. More than a mile long, controlled by traffic control devices, 35 miles an hour.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel.
Sort of like West Fair Avenue.
Yes, absolutely.
West Fair Avenue.
So, I don't know whether I should go that direction. I know this, no matter what the signs say, categorically across the city, any street, my office and myself have talked, I might get it through other avenues of communication. You know, we have people that just don't abide by our signs, and I have a lot of sympathy about that, because I've been invited by a neighbor on South Broad Street to come and stand on the porch and sit with him and have a drink, and it's too cold right now, but I told him I might take him up on the offer, and I was telling, and they're wonderful, lovely elderly couples, and from their perspective, they really have a good perspective of seeing it. But I would say throughout the city, we have a speed problem, and that's one of the purposes what I would love for the support of the taxpayer on this income tax levy, because our purpose of this direct patrol is to really make an impact, like on South Broad, or I can give you other streets, that people are just ignoring things, and it's a habitual problem to do some posting and directly deal with the presence. We really do not have the forces to do some direct solutions to these areas to educate people. It might not be necessarily we're going to write a ticket every time, but we might just pull them over and say, hey, listen, do you realize what you're doing? But sometimes we're going to have to. And I can say categorically, you know, people are obligated to abide by lights, and stop signs, and yields, and speed limits, but we have better cars. We got cars that do things that I don't even know what they're doing. I got a car now bought for my wife, not me, that starts to stop, and she's not pushing on the brake before she hits that car in front of her. But we still need responsibility of the driver, no matter how far we go in this technology of automobiles, we still need a responsibility to drive safely in our community and protect our pedestrians, our motorcycle drivers. I mean, there are great risks a lot of times of what happens, and so, I'm taking this serious, and I realize that we have taken other lights down, and nobody's said a word, but this is a group that's passionate about their desire for me to keep a signal up there, and I realize that. And I wish my job at times was always simple. I'm trying to figure out what part of the day that simple does kick in. This is not one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Further discussion on this item or any other old business? Ms. Downhour, you have anything else as you brought this up?
No, I just appreciate the update, and I appreciate Debbie coming and speaking about the light. It's something that we've been involved in and communicated back and forth, and it is very important to the citizens down there, and people do fly on Broad Street.
Yes, they do.
And with the lack of police officers to be able to write tickets on Broad, it's, we're in between a rock and a hard spot, so I do hope that we solve the safety concern as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Ms. Downhour. Any other unfinished business this evening? If not, does anyone have any new business this evening? Yes?
I would like to ask those committee chairs of each council committee to get your minutes, and to me, please, by the end of the year, so we can all, those all closed out and all minutes are there. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Please do so. We have, while this is our last meeting, we do have a couple of weeks left, and so, any committee chair who has outstanding minutes not submitted, please get those to the clerk as quickly as possible. Further new business this evening? Yes, Ms. Hall?
Thank you, sir. The law director asked me in his absence to mention that NOPEC, the city's new electric aggregation program administrator, has sent out all of the letters to citizens who are eligible or are currently enrolled in our aggregation program. The letter to the eligible folks went out two to three weeks ago, and then the citizens who are currently enrolled should have received their letter within the last one to two weeks. If you did not receive a letter, it is most likely because you are not eligible to participate because you're currently in a contract with another provider, but there have been discrepancies, so you are welcome to call NOPEC and find out from them directly if you are eligible to be in the program, or if you would like to opt out of the program, you can call and let them know that. The number is 1-855-667-3201. And then the clerk of council let me know that she did put a newsflash on the city's website, and if you just go to the city's homepage, you can see it on the bottom, and just click on that, and there's a link to the NOPEC website, as well as the same phone number that you can contact 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I've called it myself, as Councilman Stotin indicated. They were very helpful, very, very quick and courteous, and I got the information I needed within a minute. If anybody has any questions about that as well, they're welcome to contact the mayor's office.
Not the law director's office? Not the law director's office, the mayor's office.
I'm sure the mayor would be happy to help them with those.
Yes, so questions about that, please check the website. You can get the phone number and see a sample letter on the mayor's Facebook page, I believe, as well, of what has gone out, and so, and of course, again, you can always contact the mayor should you have additional questions. Thank you, Ms. Hall. Yes, Mr. Stotin?
We have no reason for a special meeting tomorrow, so we can, I'm asking that we not have that.
That is correct. The three members of council who called that special meeting, all three of you are in favor of not having it?
Yes.
Yes, I see heads nodding up and down, so we will cancel the special meeting for tomorrow, as all business for the year has been completed during this council session. Further, as we look ahead to the meetings, we need to note that as we get started into the new year, that we typically have regularly scheduled committee meetings for finance on the 13th, but we will not yet at that time have committee chair people, and so we will need to make that a council of the whole meeting. So, January 13 at 6, there will be a council of the whole meeting before the regular 6:30 council meeting that night. Is there any other new business this evening? Yes, Mr. Groff?
Yeah, I'd just like to do one thing, if I could get up for just a second. Jack Matlin is here. He will be sitting in this seat come the first of the year.
The binder has been passed. That's a true story. Thank you, Mr. Groff, for that. Mr. Matlin, we welcome you, as well as Mr. James, to city council, and all returning members of council as well. Is there any other new business this evening? If not, then I'll just take a moment to say thank you to each person around the table. It has been a productive session over this last year, and for each of you, for the most part, over the last two years, those who have been with us the entire time. This year alone, we've considered or have under consideration more than 150 resolutions and more than 30 ordinances. It's been very busy, and I appreciate each one of you and your continued work to serve the citizens of Lancaster who have put us in these spots. So, thank you very much for that, and I'll just say very quickly a Merry Christmas to each one of you and to your families, not only those around the council table, but members of the administration, all city employees, and each person here tonight, and those watching as well. A very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Other new business tonight? If not, we'll ask the clerk to read our upcoming meetings.
Upcoming meetings, council of the whole, January 13 at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers, then the regular meeting at January 13 at 6:30 p.m. At that time, we will have a public hearing on temporary ordinance 20-19*. The meeting following is January 27 at 6:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Upcoming gatherings is the oath of office on Monday, December 30 at 6:00 p.m. at Olive Dale Senior Citizen Center. If you have not gotten your who would be swearing you in information to me, please do so within the next week. And then the organizational meeting, January 2, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. here, will actually take place at City Hall, 1897 room, the organizational meeting.
Thank you very much.
Upcoming committee meetings, I'm only going to read the finance committee meeting for January 27 at 6:00 p.m. The rest of the meetings for the year have been set, but that's all I'm going to read at this time, if that's okay?
Yeah. The committee meetings have been set, was it?
Finance committee.
Finance committee, right.
Yes, finance committee. And that's it.
Okay, very good. Are there any bills tonight?
There are. Spotlight, trophies, and awards, $88 for plaques, nameplates, and the tin plate for City Hall. I also have two PNC, one for MNCO, $537.10 for publication of legislation, and $108.50 for publication of a notice of a public hearing.
Very good. Well, you want to get one more in here, Mr. Woodard, and make a motion to pass the bill or to pay the bills?
So, move.
Motion to pay the bills, Mr. Groff?
Second.
Well, a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Is there a need for an executive session? If not, a motion to adjourn is in order.
Adjourn.
I wasn't sure if you were going to skip me that time. Not this time. This is the last time. Make a motion to adjourn. A motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Merry Christmas. Be sure to sign your legislation. Have a good night.